Hello, my name is Mark DeSalva. I'm the town moderator here in North Andover. Welcome to yet again another edition of On the Warrant. I'm joined by my colleagues from left to right. The Chair of our Finance Committee, Tim Sheerhart. Chair of our Board of Selectmen, Phil DeColigero. Our estimable Town Manager, Andrew Mailer. Dr. Jennifer Price, our Superintendent of Schools. And the Chair of our School Committee, Amy Mavely. We're going to spend a few minutes today talking about our upcoming town meeting. Let me allow the invitation of you to come to our town meeting on Tuesday, May 15th, to be held at the high school at 7:00 PM. It's an open town meeting. It's our legislative branch of our government. Any citizen and every registered voter has the opportunity to make their opinion and their vote count. I think we're going to start with the principal policy document that our town meeting addresses on an annual basis, and that's our town budget. We have a near $100 million, much more than that when you consider all of the other expenditures across all accounts. But we have, what is it, about a $96 million budget this year that we're considering?
Yeah, we're over about $98 million.
$98 million, okay. Help me with, at least on the municipal side, both the creation of that budget and anything that you think needs specific address.
We've got a fantastic transparent process. It actually starts way back in September. So although May is when we take up the town meeting warrant and the budget, the process is interesting here in North Andover. And then residents really get some level of participation beginning way back in September. A strategic planning session on the Board of Selectmen sets the overarching goals for the community. We adopt a document called the Budget Policy Document, and that really jumpstarts the budgetary process. The Revenue Fixed Costs and Review Committee, which includes members of the school administration and the Finance Committee and others, get together and really talk about the framework. What's going to be available from a revenue perspective? And then that sort of jumpstarts the budget document itself. I think what's been really interesting here in North Andover, and in some ways, I hate to overstate the term, use the term "unique," but certainly what is different here in North Andover is the relationship between the school department and the Town Manager's office and the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. Certainly, Dr. Price and I have worked fantastically together over the last couple of years, and that has resulted in sort of ongoing conversations about the best way to allocate funds to serve the overall goals of the community. That's what's different here in a very positive way. And when the Finance Committee ultimately gets involved, they hold, you know, a dozen-plus meetings about everything that's financial, allowing residents to get the opportunity to participate, both either by watching at home or coming to those meetings. And they meet with various departments and get specific information back from the process. It helps us, too. It's a very iterative process. We get to reflect ourselves on our own preliminary budget document. And ultimately, they have to take action on that and make a recommendation.
So give us some bottom lines relative to the budget this year, at least on the municipal side.
On the municipal side, we're seeing modest growth in terms of general budgetary growth. I think that's a reflection, really, quite frankly, of the fact that we have shown budgetary growth in the last five or six or seven years. So everything above that is incremental. We've caught up from those days. We were really falling behind to the point that we provide a very solid level of services throughout the community. And now with 3% or sometimes slightly less than 3%, we're able to enhance that service and continue that service moving forward. So we've left that realm where we're really catching up to a point that we're maintaining and incrementally increasing services. So all of the departments are adequately funded, with some marginal increases in budgetary growth, specifically Selectmen's interest to add someone who will focus on the social and psychological welfare of our residents.
We'll address that directly a little bit later.
And so that's the sort of centerpiece of something we're doing. We're also implementing a pilot program at the senior center to support families with members of the family that have dementia, making sure that the people around them will support them every day, have an opportunity to take a break from that. So we're piloting out a program which will allow a support for the folks who suffer from dementia and their families. And if that works well, I think we'll roll that out on a more permanent basis moving forward. And centered around all that is our continued investment in reserves, our understanding that our financial well-being, the fact we got the AAA bond rating. Is centered around the idea that we save first, then add programs, as opposed to what we did for many years, which is spend first and then see if there was anything left over to spend.
Well, to the superintendent, similar circumstance in terms of bottom lines?
Yeah, actually, the bottom line for the school department is a 3.65% increase, so slightly larger than even the municipal side. And this year's budget, I don't mean to say it was simple, but it was actually quite simple. As many of you know, we're opening the new Anne Bradstreet Early Childhood Center, and we needed to staff that space. And so all of our budget requests this year go to staffing that space in terms of additional, well, actually, no additional classroom teachers, but nurses and secretaries and administrators and guidance counselors and special educators. When you open up a new building, you needed about nine new staff members to get that building up and running. And a few things I really want to make, kind of call out here, is when you do that, so let me give a very concrete example. So when we increased two special educators at the Early Childhood Center, that actually decreases the special education loads across the district. When we increase the guidance counselor, we hire a guidance counselor, which the preschool has not had, we now are reducing the number of kids the guidance counselors across the district have to service. So this was really a way that although we are staffing the Early Childhood Center, we're actually increasing services across the elementary level. And this has been something we've been talking about for a long time, is reducing class size at the elementary school level. That's kind of been our strategic plan. We've been very focused on that for three years. So just so residents understand, a number of years ago, 52% of our classes were above our recommended class sizes. That's a cap of 22 K to 2, 25 once you get to 3 to 5. 52%. Our estimate next year is we'll be at 17% next year. So that's an exciting move for us. It's been a gradual change. We added four new elementary school teachers for this budget year. Now that we have students moving into the K, we're going to be able to reduce class sizes more. And then our hope is, over time, to get that to zero. And we know where we are. I can tell you that the Town Manager can speak probably more eloquently than I can about class sizes and the importance of class size. So this is truly a team effort to reach a goal that we've all really put out there. And our goal is to have appropriate class sizes focusing first on the elementary school. And they're all very cognizant that the next step is to look at the middle school. So yes, there's an increase. It is very focused this year. And I don't mean to say it was simple, but we knew what we needed to do. We want to open the building in a way that provides all the supports and services and feels like a school. It's just not 16 additional classrooms to a building. It's going to create a new Anne Bradstreet school.
Excellent. So let's talk about some of the policy initiatives that are in the budget. And perhaps, Phil, you can tell us that which you believe most important.
Yes, so the Board of Selectmen, as the Town Manager said, we meet the end of September, beginning of October each year to lay out the policy that we want to pursue and set the agenda that we hope the budget will live up to. And the great thing is, it does kick off the budget process. So folks can start paying attention at any point in the year, and they'll be able to pick up what the town is doing. It's not like there's this small window. I mean, it really is this process that, with the exception of the summer months, we're always in some type of prep mode. And so September this fall will kick off this coming year, but this past year in September we met and we laid out what we hoped. Were some goals that were beyond just making sure we were keeping everything under cost containment. We talked about aspirations, what are things that we'd like to add if it were possible to add. And one thing that's been coming up, at least in my tenure as a Selectman, is just the gap in mental health support. Specifically, it was brought up by a few families that battled opioid abuse and addiction. And it kind of ballooned from there. We saw some of our neighboring communities experiment with different programs. Some were more successful than others. And so starting last year, some members of the Board of Health, other members of the Board of Selectmen, Regina Keen, myself, we really started to dive into what we could do as a community that would make sense financially, but also make sense as far as, you know, human services go. And so one of the things that the Board discussed and actually agreed to add, which I think is relatively small in the grand scheme of our 97-plus, $98 million budget, but isn't small when it comes to services, was the adding of community support staff, which is a single full-time staff-supported position modeled a little bit based off of what's been done in Andover, where it's not just about substance abuse, it's about overall mental health. And I think that what we've heard back from Andover is that a lot of times there is public safety that responds to incidences that really, mental health support could act as a safety net, whether it's things like domestic abuse, whether it's things like general hoarding, perhaps it's a senior that's living by themselves. And so we talked about that and the fact that this very small change in our budget, very small increase relative to everything else that's happening, could actually have a tremendous amount, tremendous impact on the health of our community.
So crafting a true community response in a non-disjointed manner.
Yeah, I equated to it, I think the best thing is, a lot of people in our community understand we have a health department. A lot of people in our community understand we have a public health nurse. They understand that we focus a lot on physical health. And yet, there's been a tremendous opening of access to physical health services as a society, and that's nationally. But mental health, which tends to have the bigger stigma, and it's also the one that it's easier to fall through the cracks and have there be some real repercussions. And so it's a great way, I think, to step in, support our residents and support our community, and create a service where right now, I think, when families face this or when individuals face this issue, they don't know where to turn. So it's, we're stepping in in a way that municipalities haven't traditionally, and yet I think we're filling a role that traditionally municipalities always thought that they should fill. So it's nice, and our Board voted and discussed, or discussed and then voted unanimously to make that a priority, among other things. But that was certainly something that I think is absolutely clear in this budget and town meeting document.
I think that's the definition of the word "community," frankly. So from the school side of it, any specific initiatives or comment?
Dr. Price covered the key ones, which is opening the Anne Bradstreet school. I've also had the pleasure, I think we're going to talk about it, of being part of the committee, looking at the new recreation facility that, while that's a full community opportunity, it's also something that the schools will be able to benefit from because it's in three of our backyards. And so, looking forward, we're also, you know, looking down the road toward what we need to do next at the middle school in various ways, and curriculum and other areas, too.
So we talked about how the budget is our principal policy document. We have a group of citizens that I appoint, who are known as the Finance Committee, who are the hardest-working, most unknown, well, maybe more known today than in past years, but notwithstanding, absolutely a vital review in terms of pulling all this together. You have a specific responsibility to town meeting. Why don't you tell us what that is?
Sure. I represent nine of us on the Finance Committee, who are very diverse people, coming from various backgrounds, who really add their expertise to each of the areas that maybe others don't have. And we cover more than $130 million worth of items, whether it be the basic budget, the CIP, the CPA money. We look at pretty much everything, hundreds of pages of documents. We look for things that are out of the unusual, out of the ordinary and unusual. More important, though, we step back and say, does the budget fulfill the Selectmen's policy statement? Does the vision that the Town Manager and the Superintendent and the school committee laid out, does the budget fulfill that? And I'm saying right now that there is good planning, there's good execution, there's good leadership. And so, all in all, we've got a good plan for the current year. And that's what we plan on presenting to town meeting, is with the current coming year, fiscal year '19, everything is in order. I also look at us as guardians of investments. We're the caretakers of the people's money. How is it being spent? Where are the resources going? And is it being spent wisely? And again, as the Chair of the Finance Committee, I can honestly say that we feel that it is being spent very wisely and going in the right direction and everything, on all cylinders. I like it, so.
Does the Finance Committee have a public policy objective itself that it seeks to fulfill?
We do. We have a public policy of actually being your independent body evaluating the budget to say that it's within the means and the wherewithal of the revenue, and the money is being well-spent and being spent judiciously. We also look at things more so these days of, how do things look in the forecast? And so we've got our eyes on the forecast. In the current year, it's pretty cut and dry. It's a good consensus, was the number 7, 7th consensus budget in a year in a row. But we're also looking forward and looking at things such as the other pension, other pension employment benefits, as well as the school funding for such things as the North Andover Middle School. So our goal is to at least bring this, all the stuff, to people's attention, and our letter to the people in the warrant addresses most everything.
So it appears that we're in concert in terms of moving forward in the town budget. We've got other capital accounts. We have other significant spending. Let's talk about some of that, and let's move to the capital initiative program that we have.
So first of all, of the 29 warrant articles, 12 are financial articles at some level or another. So we, as you've indicated, the, you know, finance is at the center of what happens every year at town meeting on top of other things. Capital Improvement Article, in addition to the operating budget, in many ways delivers on the non-programmatic promises. Where do we stand with facilities? How do we improve the community? One of the things that Selectmen have really championed, and I know the school committee embraces as well, and the Superintendent, is this idea of connectivity, adding sidewalks, bringing our community together through finding, you know, safe means of travel. And that's been a heavy focus, and will continue moving forward. And things like the capital plan deliver on that. The Anne Bradstreet school is part of a capital program initiative, something we call the Facility Master Plan. I like to think the most successful capital improvement initiative that I've seen in a local community in decades and that we had. We set out seven projects, with the kindergarten project, the ECC project being part of that, and ultimately delivering on this year's sort of centerpiece project, which is the last of seven, which is a brand-new senior center. And that's, the financing for that is in the capital plan. It's being supported by the Finance Committee and others. In many ways, it should be a project that, as a community, we recognize has the greatest reach and opportunity. We're in, we have an aging population here. We have an opportunity to institute new programs in the long term that recognizes that as a society, we're getting older, and we should be finding ways to make sure we support that.
Even individually, we're getting older, I can attest.
Yes, it's true.
Let's talk about two of those specific items. The senior center, anybody call in at any moment that they wish, and the process of where we're going and how we're getting there. And then I'd like to turn to the Fields Program as well.
I think that anybody who's ever gone down to the senior center would say that the current facilities we have, though, they were updated several years ago, they just aren't at the level that adequately serves the population that we hope to serve. And so the opportunity to expand a senior center from, I think it's 7,500 square feet, to ideally 14,000, I think is the ultimate final goal. So to almost double the space and have it set up in a way that is actually meant for seniors from day one.
So where's it going?
So we're looking at a location right now on Sutton Street. And so that Sutton Street location is, for folks that aren't familiar, it's right by the airport. It's where the former Knights of Columbus and, I think, up until recently, the Grace Point Church was. And actually, I think I just saw them taking down the sign for Grace Point this week. So there's a development being looked to put in there, and the person who owns the site is looking to donate a portion of that property, that land and site work, so that we could locate the senior center right there on a main road, so that way it's easily accessible to the population at large. And the end result would be that we create a site that ideally has enough parking for our seniors, is large enough for our seniors, and is versatile enough that if we need to use it for something else in the event of an emergency, it can be used for that.
So what needs to be done in order to effectuate that program? We have this, we have our legislative process. Some steps need to be taken. What are they, and they will be addressed at this town meeting?
So they can jump into there. So there are three, typically three strata within our warrant, if you look at the table of contents. One is what we call general articles, then financial articles, and zoning articles. And they can go in any particular order, but that's the order they're in this year. Actually, the senior center finds its way into all three of those cuts.
All three of them, I know.
And because we don't organize necessarily around a singular topic, it becomes sometimes a little bit of a challenge. And I think important for town meeting members, especially this year, to recognize, there are two centerpiece projects here, but you've got to bump around the warrant a little bit to get to them. So the first is...
We might tie them together...
You may tie them together.
...in terms of the moderators' privileges.
And I'm sure we'll get to that at some point. As it relates to presenting the book, it becomes a little more linear, even though you have to sort of jump around a little bit. So in the first section, the general section of the warrant articles, is a provision whereby the town accepts the donated land. And it should be noted that the existing senior center clearly needs to be approved. Everybody adopted that idea back in 2012. What became evident was, you know, adding to the existing building was not the solution. Creating a bigger parking problem wasn't the solution. Forcing the Selectmen to acquire private property to add parking to satisfy what's happening on Main Street was not the solution. But we needed to keep the senior centers close to our economic engine, which is on Main Street. And this really satisfies both. We're less than a mile, as the crow flies, from this lot that'll be donated by the developer, really an unheard-of public-private partnership. He's additionally making some site improvements and doing some of the original design, all part of the project. So one of the early articles is to accept that donation, because town meeting is the only authority that can accept the donation of land. That's been supported by every group, you know, that's been involved, and I think is something that town meeting members should support as well. When we get to the financial side, it's the Capital Improvement Article that funds the nearly $6 million to build the facility. And a Selectmen DeColigero identified will be between 13,000 and 14,000 square feet. Today, we're a little over 7,000. Nearly double the size, and really more appropriate ton of jam in addition on the existing space would be problematic. And then in order, part of the discussion with the developer was that, in addition for him exchanging the donation of this land, we would find ways to reduce the impact of a development on that site on the neighborhood. This facility could have been a five-story, multiple-building development within 30 feet of property lines with a lot of density. And what we've been able to do, and the developer's been fantastic, is bring the height of that future development down, the non-s senior center side of the development, move it further away from the property lines of the individual residents, and create, quite frankly, a better community feel about what will ultimately be placed in that site. And so those will require two zoning articles, which have been endorsed by the planning board. So you'll have two zoning articles to accomplish making the development happen, the Capital Improvement Article to fund it, and the acceptance of the donation early on to make sure that we can put the senior center there.
And that donation for that senior, so the senior center is going on a site that we are going to be getting approximately about $1 million worth of site work and land donation to the town. And so, I mean, it's not a, it's not a small donation to make this project happen and be able to get to the footprint, the square footage that we think is adequate to serve the seniors.
Let's pivot to the field project, and it seems like it should be a school project, is it?
Well, you know, that's the wonderful part of North Andover, is we have decided that that seems silly to say "school municipal side." I mean, we are one town. So it is actually, and this is a wonderful example of us coming together and saying, this is not about territory. This is about creating a resource for our entire community. So I think, you know, the concept is that, you know, we have these three schools surrounding this field.
Tell us, the benefit of people who aren't aware...
Yep. So the middle school, the Bradstreet, and the Atkinson. Typically, it's the Hayes Stadium is what we talk about. And that is a very underutilized resource for this town. We have a number of leagues that play there, but it doesn't feel like it's a town-owned space. People walk the track. You have to be a little careful when you currently walk the track. I think that the best use of that is often in the summer for, you know, night out, national night out. But, you know, it's not, it's not, I don't think, as seen as a jewel of the North Andover community. And I think the entire idea here is to create something that the entire community feels very proud of, that is integrated between town and schools. And so it does feel like it might be a school project, but I think we've gotten beyond that.
Anybody have any notion on the numbers as far as that project's concerned, or any other comment?
The comment is approximately $8 million, eight points...
$8,750,000.
So we're going close to $9 million.
And 29 cents.
What's nice is, what's nice is that it is a collaboration between the town, the school, and even private citizens, because all of those resources are coming together. The Community Preservation Act is funding the largest chunk of it. The town itself was putting in some money, but so is private resources. So it is a community thing. And so when the Finance Committee looked at it, we said, this looks, first of all, best choose for this money, and secondly, it is a good investment, and it will be a town jewel. So that was our overall opinion on the matter.
Amy, anything to add relative to that interest?
Yeah, I think it's been a nice committee that's worked on it. There are Selectmen Smidellis on it, as well as myself, and then various members of the community, really Rick Green has been, and Terry Holland have been involved from the beginning. And I think we held 18, 19 meetings with as many user groups as we could possibly think of to get people's input.
You've probably spent more time at the senior center than you ever thought you'd spend.
And it's interesting, it's so important that they're getting the new senior center, because there's so many things that we could be providing the seniors, and we're trying to make sure that that, this space is not the school fields behind the middle school. This is a town recreation space for all generations to come in and enjoy. And through all these community meetings, we got some good ideas, but we also got a lot of good support, and we did listen to concerns. And I'm sure more concerns will come up. But the concerns right now are, it's not a healthy, safe space per se. That track needs to be changed, and we're looking forward to getting rid of that, so.
So let's stay on finances for a moment and talk about something that's maybe a lot more difficulty, A, even understand, but also deal with. And that's this odd thing called...
OPEB, the Other Pension Employment Benefits. Essentially, it is the promise we made to our retirees and future retirees to fund their healthcare costs through the rest of their life. It's a cost share. The retirees put money into it as well. But under new current accounting principles, you're required to estimate the value of that liability using actuarial tables, healthcare costs, interest rates, discount rates, projections. And it's estimated to be about $109 million right now is the current liability. That is not unusual for this town, I'm sorry, this state, this country. This OPEB situation is rampant throughout the country. What's unique about this town is that under Mr. Mailer's leadership, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, we've actually begun addressing, how can we best manage that? Some reserves have been put away for this particular situation. Total target is approximately 5%. If the budget gets approved this year, it'll be like 2.3, 2.4%. So we are on our way to at least minimizing the impact of anything hurting us from this particular event. But there still has to be a recognition that there is a significant liability, and candidly, it will only grow.
There are accounting guidelines. Is there any legislative or legal obligation for the community to fulfill this?
There is, right now, there is a obligation. I'll call it a legal obligation, but if not, it may be a moral obligation. But, you know, some cities, such as the city of Detroit, have actually overturned that kind of thing. But I think we have definitely a responsibility to our retirees, to our future retirees, to manage and to be able to be there for them in this situation. Now, things can change. We just don't know. But right now, we know, we know today, it's $109 million sitting out there.
Andrew?
Yeah, I mean, I think from our perspective, we, you know, the communities that have been effective in understanding and trying to address this issue have done it the way that we're talking about, that, one, we don't make it so, that's a fairly complex topic to begin with.
Yes.
But we don't make it so, we try to break it down to sort of simple building blocks of how to address things. And quite frankly, we have a process that we've used for almost everything. We think of what's going on now with the Early Childhood Center and the senior center and the Fields we talked about earlier. We're following the same process to address the OPEB liability in the sense that first we identify the problem, we look at the scope of the problem, and then figure out where our goal is to get to, and then break that down into even smaller steps to make sure we can achieve it. And I think the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen and others have shown that ability to take a problem down into workable steps. And in some places, quite frankly, the conversation becomes so excited about whatever the topic is, that everybody stops to focus on how we get things accomplished. So we're breaking that problem down into legitimate steps. The town has set aside $1.5 million at the end of this town meeting. If we're successful, some town meeting, two town meeting warrant articles, we'll be close to $2.2 million of funding that liability. I, you know, I don't want to foreshadow where the committee that's been formed by the Board will go, but I think ultimately...
So there's a special committee that's reviewing this?
Yeah, I think they can talk about that.
So the Board of Selectmen, actually, it's being spearheaded by one of our colleagues, Chris Nobley. He's formed a committee that's made up of a combination of town staff, Finance Committee members, and just residents to review this obligation that we have, as you said. Tim, it's $109 million. And so they're assessing whether or not there could be changes that could be made, or what the long-term strategy could be to chip away at this and fulfill our obligation to our retirees.
I do want to make one more comment, though. The $109 million is, wow. It's a wow.
Pretty daunting, yes.
It's a full-year budget, easily. But we're not in bad shape because of it. We, again, have renewed our AAA bond rating with full knowledge, the bond rating agency full knowledge of this liability. So even though that's there, they still recognize North Andover as a great investment and as I do, so.
Appreciate that. So the last financial article that we'll talk about should be Community Preservation Act. Who wants to take a lead on where we're going with Community Preservation Act?
I think we're doing a lot of exciting things. We talked about a big chunk of this.
And allow me to interrupt as well. There have been some reasonable changes as well in terms of the Community Preservation Act committee, and that might be worthy of being addressed.
Great point. So actually, one of the articles, and I'm blanking on the article number, but the board of selectmen and the Community Preservation Committee...
It's early up, don't worry about it.
I was going to say, it's a simple read, but we actually, we're continuing our step towards making our community more transparent, our boards more transparent, and a program like this more accessible to the public. So we voted as a board to support the Community Preservation Committee's decision to actually televise their meetings. And so for folks that don't know what the Community Preservation Committee is, which probably a fair number of people, our property owners in town pay a 3% surcharge on their property tax bills. That amount of money is matched to a certain degree by the state, and those funds have to be set aside and used on a certain type of project, whether it's affordable housing, open space, historic preservation. We've been given a little bit of flexibility as a state municipalities can pursue projects like the Fields project. And so the big, big piece, big piece is the Fields project that Amy and others have been working on. And so that's a big chunk of it. However, that doesn't mean that some of the smaller pieces in this year's project are any less important for certain people in our community. One of the things that I think a lot of credit is owed to the administration at Town Hall, they prioritized the acquisition of generators for some of our senior housing complexes. So we have certainly not missed that, you know, there's been a lot of power outages recently and for folks living in affordable housing units. That's meant some of them have gone 72-plus hours without electricity and as a result, without heat. And so our affordable housing units, so it's Bingham Way, McCabe Court, and Fountain Drive, I think are the three. They have community spaces available, general rec rooms almost. So we will have ideally, with the approval of Town Meeting, funds made available to install generators at each of those sites so that if those neighborhoods go down, there's at least an immediate spot right there that people can...
It's a warming sector, a life-saving, frankly.
Absolutely. That's one of the pieces. Another piece that really stands out to me is related to that, where we have Bingham Way that's had some infrastructure issues, the parking and sidewalks over there. And so some of the funds will be made available to address those. Again, it's affordable housing, an affordable housing complex overseen by the Housing Authority. And so for residents living there, I mean, that's a huge improvement at a site that otherwise doesn't get a lot of money made available. And so...
And let's talk about that transparency issue. I thought all committees in town had to televise their meetings and deliberations.
So that's not true. They have to publish their, they have to post their meetings if they are a board. I mean, we have some committees, like our festival committee and our sustainability committee, they're not televised. A few years ago, the finance committee voted to televise their meetings and the town chose to amend our bylaw so that, we appreciate what the finance committee did, but we as a town then said, okay, no matter what, you have to televise them. It's not just up to the individual committee members. And so we felt like that...
So this will be a bylaw circumstance once again because they spend such a significant portion of our tax dollars?
It is. It's a similar, similar type of path that was traveled. That committee voted to televise their meetings and it just makes sense that we add this. And it makes sense for a little bit even more of a reason than other committees because you apply, outside groups can apply to get funding from the Community Preservation Committee, and they are actually allocating tax dollars that have to be approved by Town Meeting, but they're allocating those tax dollars out of these specific accounts. And so it's, it's important, not just for people, I think, to watch that process, but I think it's important to help just raise general awareness because they can be used, again, on historic preservation or affordable housing developments. They aren't, it isn't town money being used exclusively on town projects, though the Fields project is, of course, a big town project. The Housing Authority project is not town-owned. That's a different, separate, independent entity. And so it's good, I think, for people to just be made more aware by having access to these tapes and these minutes, just to see what potential there exists.
I think that's great. So let's segue into zoning, everyone's favorite subject that might put some people to sleep, but it too has a public policy and even generational effect. Anything specific that you'd like to bring up on zoning this year?
There's several zoning initiatives as there are every year. And I know that Town Meeting, in some ways, it's one of those technical conversations that I think requires Town Meeting members to invest sometimes a little more time than in other articles, and it can be a little bit of a challenge. There's a couple of articles on there. As we identified, there are two articles specific to the senior center to allow the zoning change so the developer can do what they want to do and the town can build the senior center. So two of the articles within the zoning side handle that. There's a change in the zoning bylaws that we just had a long and rigorous conversation about an application for a cell tower in town on a residential parcel. And what we learned from that is even though we have a notice requirement under the statute, we decided in our own bylaw, we've decided to expand, or the planning board has decided to expand that notice so more people would be involved or get notice that there's going to be this kind of conversation. Again, a transparency, community awareness type article, and I very much support the planning board's desire to want to include more people in the conversation. There's also a bylaw in there to deal with solar. We have not as much the residential sort of roof-mounted solar, but there are other solar projects to make sure that we have a level of zoning or land use control around some of those solar initiatives. That's been a really tough balance, right? You want to encourage the environmentally friendly nature of solar and at the same time, make sure there's enough land use control that what happens in a large commercial lot may or may not impact what's happening next door, there's a quality of life is maintained. So those are the bigger items out there. There's an acceptance of a roadway that's fairly straightforward, that most folks will see as straightforward. So for the zoning articles, it's the two senior center articles, the solar and the notification on the cell that are the other bigger articles.
And the last item that we'll be generally considering at Town Meeting this year are citizens petitions. And I believe that we have one citizen petition. And somehow, it falls into our use of the word "C" for some reason. We've had cupcakes, chickens, cannabis, Citizens United, and now we're going to be talking about crosswalks in a certain part of our community. I know that the selectmen have reviewed that issue. Perhaps you can bring us up to date on what's being requested.
So this is actually a really exciting part of our town, right? We're talking about building a new kindergarten, we're talking about doing this Fields project, and at the same time, the state of Massachusetts, Mass. Highway, has identified the intersection of 125 and Mass. Ave is needing some substantial safety improvements. I would bet that if you've lived in town a year or more, you've witnessed, hopefully you've not been part of it, but you've witnessed some type of accident, whether it's been minor or major, at this intersection and it's...
Say again?
Just yesterday or the day before, I drove by one.
And some people, I mean, during one of the power outages, I definitely drove through two different accidents over the course of that day. So the state has chosen to pursue this project. It's been exciting. There were certainly some initial presentations made where I think, I think a lot of people in our community felt there should be tweaks made. We talked about expanding sidewalks to the Kittredge School, and the school administration was great about making sure that the sidewalks hit the far corner from that intersection so that students could actually walk to Kittredge. Let's create all of the sidewalk but not connect it to our school. That didn't make sense. But there was a complaint, several of the people who immediately about that intersection had some concerns about just how much that was going to impact their properties. In one gentleman's case, the state has actually decided to completely take his home. It just was going to have such a detrimental impact. Two of the other properties, the state tried to work with homeowners to try and address their specific concerns. One of the residents in particular presented this because she felt that just in general, there are a lot of safety pieces that aren't being addressed. And, I mean, the board is very sensitive, so it is, again, just by coincidence, given the location of town, it shouldn't come as a surprise that a lot of the people involved actually live in these neighborhoods. And so this particular crosswalk, coincidentally enough, is the crosswalk that a chunk of Atkinson students use to get to that back neighborhood. My daughter is one. I sit there not every day, but I stand there often enough to see the impact. And so certainly, it's never a great idea to have kids just running across, you know, a Main Street like that. And so we've really been working with the project development team. The town managers arranged for several public meetings. We've had dozens of people attend. We've certainly had a lot of public conversations at our own board meetings to talk about what could be done to make that site better. And so there have been some additional expansion of sidewalks so that it makes it easier for pedestrians. And we talked about different type of light options over there, not necessarily full-on traffic lights, but whether or not we could have some type of signalized alert for drivers when they're driving on either side of the road if students are crossing. Now, we still have a crosswalk that is guarded by a crossing guard during school hours. In the case of this particular warrant, it would compel us as a board to pursue certain improvements or require that the state pursue certain improvements over there that we can't necessarily compel the state to do. And it also would, I think, restrict what type of signals we could put at that particular crossing, which, again, would be a little bit more restrictive than, I think, what the board is trying to have done.
So the request is in effect a resolution, a suggestion to the community that it ought to endeavor to do what this specific petitioner wishes to be done?
I'm struggling opening this. Yes.
Okay.
So it's, if you, just, I think, staying on, it's, it's an interesting article in the sense that, and citizen petitions have the tendency to be interesting articles.
Yes.
It'll probably take a fair amount of time in that I think it would be wrong for the reader who will get this. So we're, by citizen petitions, when someone submits one of those under Massachusetts law, it's one of the great benefits of Massachusetts law, any citizen can raise a topic, we must literally print what the citizen has asked us to put on the warrant verbatim. And I think with, and I appreciate and respect everybody's right to do that, it does, though, as a read, maybe leave the impression that the state or others have not been as aware to the public safety or pedestrian safety issue as they have. Again, selectmen de collegeiro identified the selectmen's requirement to have two public hearings on this. The second one had nearly 40 people on it, all five selectmen attended. Selectmen have had at least on four different occasions this item on the agenda. And through their efforts and the efforts of the school department, the school committee, there is now going to be a signal where one wasn't in the plan. There's going to be thousands of linear feet of sidewalks connecting neighborhoods and pedestrian safety that didn't exist beforehand. This is a $6 million investment by the state into not fix, not only fix a really difficult intersection from a vehicular perspective, but improve pedestrian safety. And I think it would be, it's important for the reader when reading the article to understand that those discussions took place and that the selectmen's leadership on this have led to a signal where there wasn't one, an alignment of crosswalk, additional sidewalks, and the growth of a school zone as large as it's allowed under the federal standard. And so the selectmen's leadership on this meant that this project is so much better and certainly improves. There's just no way to look at this project without realizing pedestrian safety is improved, vehicle traffic is improved, and overall, a higher quality of life from that area will happen because of the selectmen's leadership on this project. Anything sometimes because we read articles and it makes some implication that safety is in fact being impacted negatively? I think that's exactly not the case in this case. I think public safety has been improved and pedestrian safety's been improved.
Appreciate that. Well, Town Meeting will get to hear every argument and make whatever judgment it chooses to make. I think we've exhausted the warrant. Oh, final comments relative to it.
What's new at Town Meeting this year?
Excuse me?
What's new at Town Meeting?
What's new at Town Meeting this year?
You're not throwing my curveballs at us, Mark.
That's quite all right. It's my pleasure. No curveballs at this moment anyway, but stay tuned. Town Meeting will follow its similar path, trying to fulfill my pledge and obligation to make it a fair, open, and efficient process. We're going to continue childcare, much thanks to free childcare.
That's right.
Much thanks to the community programs and Rick Alanta, who's been really wonderful.
Are parents going to sign up in advance for that?
Yes.
Parents need to sign up, and that last sign-up date is 4:00 PM Friday before Town Meeting, so I think that's the 12th. Very simply, get in touch with the community programs office and/or go to the Town Meeting page or the Town Moderators page, and there'll be a PDF sign-up available for you there. In addition to which, we're continuing our remote question opportunity, giving people who don't have the opportunity to come to Town Meeting and even two weeks prior to Town Meeting, make the community and public officials aware about what their questions might be. So you can text in and/or email in questions that may or may not, depending on whether they're otherwise addressed, be presented at Town Meeting. In addition to which, there's essentially one change, and it was previewed at our last special Town Meeting. As you know, I commissioned a statistical analysis of the past four or five Town Meetings, and it made it very, very clear that the timelines that we had relative to citizen speaking were too extensive, that we had a five-minute limit. And all too often, maybe some people inappropriately used all of that time when it could be sedented down into more specific and more appropriate conversation. One bit of advice that all moderators will give you, that the briefer and more concise and more pointed your commentary at Town Meeting is, the more likely it is that the meeting will choose to accept it. But the statistical analysis is actually quite interesting. It showed that the average of speaking by all citizens was only 74 seconds. So I unilaterally made the determination, which is my right, to limit speaking to three-minute periods this year. It is generally much more generous than most other communities, which have a one- or two-minute speaking limit and sometimes a cumulative limit in terms of people coming up multiple times, which we won't employ. And I'll use my discretion as Town Moderator in order to allow the meeting, if it needs more time, and an individual, if they need more time to discuss things, that for the enlightenment of the meeting, will be doing that. But other than that, it's status quo at Town Meeting. And I'd like to take this moment again to re-invite you to Town Meeting and to make one other comment, if I might. We've had a changing cast of characters at these on-the-warrant tapings because the chairs of the finance committee, the chairs of the school committee, and the board of selectmen change on an annual basis. But my two most prominent and frequent guests have been the town manager and the superintendent of schools. And I just want to say personal thank you to the superintendent of schools. This will be your last taping of On the Warrant, but you've been a consequential leader and we really appreciate, most particularly, the manner in which you've openly communicated with the community. So thank you.
Thank you. It's been a real honor.
It's been our pleasure as well.
You can't have guest people come back, like you could be a guest.
Maybe the new superintendent of schools would like somebody to sit in our shadow. I don't know.
I don't think so.
We can have private commentary. You're always welcome to comment.
I can text in questions.
Absolutely. It won't be called, but we'll at least read them in any case. Anything else that anyone wants to bring up?
I think just one thing you missed with the direction of the moderator in terms of making sure that the Town Meeting is more accessible. And with his support, we applied for a grant which gave us...
Thank you, yes.
Added some equipment that hasn't been introduced yet. The warrant will be available in Braille. If we have folks who need it available in Braille, you just need to call the selectman or town manager's office and we'll make that available. We've added some additional equipment so that those folks who need to attend the meeting and have a hearing impaired can certainly follow along with the meeting in a way that they haven't historically been able to do. So I thank you for your leadership and support on the grant and the selectmen for endorsing the grant as well. But those opportunities that are available this year, which haven't historically been available.
That's great.